No worries. We are now live. Thank you, your worship.
Good evening. Welcome to the City of Swift Current Council Meeting of Monday, January 11th, 2021. We'll move through this meeting tonight in the speaking order of Councillor Friesen, Councillor Christensen, Councillor Wall, Councillor Schweitzer, Councillor Tuntland Weave, and finally, Councillor Pluus. Let us begin. I'm looking at a motion to adopt the agenda that was circulated to us by Madam Clerk last week.
Your worship, I'll move that we approve the agenda as circulated.
And I will second that, your worship.
Thank you, Councillor Friesen and Councillor Wall. Are there any questions? Councillor Friesen?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Councillor Christensen?
No questions.
Councillor Schweitzer?
Not at the moment, your worship.
Councillor Tuntland Weave?
Nothing for me, sir.
Councillor Pluus?
Nothing for me, thanks.
What's wrong with Councillor Wall?
Oh, I apologize, Councillor Wall. It's a short name. Councillor Wall? I'm sorry. I'll try not to do that again. Moved by Councillor Friesen and seconded by Councillor Wall. All those in favor? Thank you. The motion has passed. Next, I would be looking for a motion to adopt the minutes. Oh, hang on here. Yes, the minutes of the December 14th, 2020 council meeting.
Your worship, I'll be happy to move those minutes for approval.
Councillor Pluus?
And your worship, all second?
Councillor Schweitzer? Thank you. These minutes were provided to us by Madam Clerk last week. Are there any questions or comments? I will move through the speaking order, beginning with Councillor Pluus. Or Pluus Friesen. I'm just getting it all mixed up tonight. Councillor Friesen?
I have no questions or comments. Thanks, your worship.
Thank you. Councillor Christensen?
Nothing, your worship.
And Councillor Wall, I'm not going to forget you.
Nothing, your worship.
Thank you. Councillor Schweitzer?
All good here, your worship.
Councillor Tuntland Weave?
No questions on the minutes.
Councillor Pluus?
Don't mess with good to me, thank you.
This motion was moved by Councillor Pluus and seconded by Councillor Schweitzer. All those in favor, please raise your hand. This motion has passed. We do not have any proclamation or delegations this evening, so we will move into the items for action. I will turn it over to the General Manager of Corporate Services to present the accounts.
Your worship. If I could just jump in, prior to the set of accounts, I have a conflict that I need to declare. As a part owner of Standard Motors, who is a recipient of some of the disbursements under this set of accounts, obviously I have a financial interest in what's going on, so I will declare a conflict and ask to be put in the waiting room.
Thank you, Councillor Pluus. You will go into the waiting room while the set of accounts are discussed. And before we go on any farther, I too need to declare a conflict of interest. The business that I am part owner in, Bridal Builders, will also be discussed in the upcoming set of accounts. The dispersment was for a job that was awarded to my business prior to the election, or prior to me running for, in the election. I will ask Deputy Mayor Tuntland Weave to take over chairing this meeting while I am placed in the waiting room alongside Councillor Pluus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can see they're both in the waiting room now. Ms. Cobbler, please proceed with presenting the first set of accounts.
Thank you and good evening, members of council. Enclosed are the general revenue fund dispersments for the period of December 14th to December 18th, 2020. I respectfully recommend that $2,739,059.28 in dispersments be approved, which includes a payment of $264,000 for payroll benefits, payments of $64,231,000 for taxes collected on behalf of school supporters, payment of $945,000 for the purchase of energy, payment of $23,000 for power costs in city facilities outside of our franchise area, payment of $52,000 for natural gas costs, payment of $16,000 for telephone and data communication services, payment of $32,000 to purchase raw water for use at the water treatment plant, payment of $15,000 for costs associated with the downtown storm drainage study, a payment of $13,000 for topographical map updates, payment of $12,000 for snow removal assistance, payment of $83,000 for costs associated with West Side Rink building upgrades, payment of $50,000 for costs associated with Fairview East Arena upgrade, a payment of $11,000 and $12,000 for purchases of chemicals for use by the water treatment plant, a payment of $33,000 for the purchase of inventory to be used by the Light and Power Department, payment of $39,000 for the purchase of fuel for city vehicles, payment of $54,000, of which $28,000 was for a rural water utility service installation, and $26,000 was for snow removal assistance, payment of $27,000 for costs associated with the Chaplain Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project, payment of $25,000 for the purchase of sand mix for use by streets and transportation, a payment of $54,000 for transit and recycling depot operations for the month of November, payment of $16,000 for snow removal assistance, payment of $52,000 for costs associated with the replacement of a 2003 Chevrolet half-ton truck for use by community services, payment of $60,000 for costs associated with the 2020 household hazardous waste collection event, a payment of $15,000 for the installation of three groundwater monitoring wells at the East landfill, a payment of $20,000 for upgrade costs associated with the bulk water fill station and water treatment plant, payment of $39,000 for landfill operations for the month of December, a payment of $99,000 for garbage collection for the month of November, a payment of $70,000 for snow removal assistance, and finally, a payment of $46,000 for engineering costs associated with Friesen Street storm water upgrades, Chinook pathway extension, Patterson waterline installation, airport runway surface rehabilitation, landfill road upgrades, and the Lee Lam Bridge Rehabilitation Project.
Thank you, Ms. Cobbler. Council, I'll be looking for a motion.
Your worship, I will move that we approve the dispersment in the sum of $2,739,5928 for the period of December 14th to December 18th, 2020.
And do I have a second, Ryan?
I'll second, your worship.
Once again, we'll move through the list, beginning with Councillor Friesen, if you'd like to speak on this.
No questions, thanks.
Councillor Christensen?
No questions, your worship.
Councillor Wall?
I have some questions here regarding Blue Hill Excavating for $11,600 some dollars. Was this also, was this a local person, a local contractor?
Good evening, members of council. This Blue Hill is a local contractor that I believe is located on Airport Road, just across from the research station who maintains a business license and does business in the city.
Okay, like last time I asked a question regarding Southern Star Trucking, you have some there. We use them quite a bit. And what, and apparently he is not local. And what was this for? $16,000?
Oh, Southern, the Southern Star, this time was for work at the West landfill for managing our asbestos disposal and for snow removal, the snow removal services during the storm as well. And they're the same type of business. They're not located within the city boundaries, but maintain a license and do business in the city.
So he doesn't pay taxes in the city?
No, I don't believe they have any business in the city, like any property in the city.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, your worship.
And Councillor Schweitzer?
Nothing at this time, your worship. Thank you.
Okay, this was moved by Councillor Wall and seconded by Councillor Schweitzer. All in favor? This motion has passed. I will ask that Mayor Brierle and Councillor Pluus be returned from their virtual waiting room and for Mayor Brierle to resume chairing this meeting.
Thank you for reinstalling Councillor Pluus and myself back to the meeting. I will now ask Ms. Cobbler to continue with the second set of accounts.
Thank you, your worship. Enclosed are the general revenue fund dispersments for the period of December 29th to December 31st, 2020. I respectfully recommend that $1,208,989.36 in dispersments be approved. Included in that amount is a payment of $258,000 for payroll benefits, payment of $10,000 for software subscription renewal for the assessment department, payment of $20,000 for monies collected on behalf of a third party, a payment of $52,000 for costs associated with the Airport Runway Surface Rehabilitation Project, a payment of $18,000 for the supply and installation of a culvert located at North Service Road in Sydney Street West, as well as excavation at two locations for water-related issues, a payment of $596,000 for policing costs for the quarter ended September 30th, 2020, payment of $13,000 for snow removal assistance, a payment of $20,000 for landfill cover material contract, as well as snow removal assistance, a payment of $23,000 for costs associated with the Mitchell Field Clubhouse project, a payment of $14,000 for costs associated with the downtown intersection improvement, landfill road upgrades, and Patterson waterline installation projects.
Thank you, Ms. Cobbler. Council, I will be looking for a motion.
Worship, I'll move that we approve $1,208,989.36 in dispersments for the period December 29th to 31st, 2020.
Thank you, Councillor Friesen. A second or a council?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Councillor Tuntland Weave. Once again, we will move through the list, beginning with Councillor Friesen. Any questions or comments?
No questions or comments. Thanks, your worship.
Councillor Christensen?
Nothing, your worship.
Councillor Wall?
Of course, I have one here. Where Elmwood, there's $20,000 for Elmwood Golf Course. What was that? I should know that. What was that for?
Thank you for the question, Councillor Wall. That payment is for donations that Elmwood Golf Club received, for which the city issued, cleared the checks from the parties making the donations, and then we issued charitable donation receipts on their behalf.
Thanks for that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councillor Schweitzer?
Nothing at this moment, your worship.
Councillor Tuntland Weave?
Nothing at this time.
And Councillor Pluus?
No, nothing to wrap up 2020. Thanks, your worship.
Thank you very much. I have one question, Ms. Cobbler, concerning a check to Wallace Construction for just under $23,000. I understand that was for the clubhouse at the 57th Ball Diamond there, and that was completed quite some time ago. Why is this only being paid now?
Thank you for the question, your worship. This payment is in relation to sales tax. In 2018, when the contract for construction was initially approved, the agreement was silent on the issue of sales tax. So we deferred to legal counsel, and their advice was that the sales tax was due and payable. So this is the final payment on that contract to satisfy all the obligations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that answer. Now, it was moved by Councillor Friesen and seconded by Councillor Tuntland Weave. All those in favor, please raise your hand. This motion has passed. Next, I will turn to the General Manager of Infrastructure Operations to bring his report on electrical rate increase, carbon charge.
Thank you and good evening. This report does deal with the electric rate increase for carbon charge for effective January 2021. The federal government implemented carbon pricing effective January 1st, 2019, which affects the City of Swift Current Light and Power Utility. SAS Power has registered for the output-based pricing system, which applies the carbon charges to their various sources of generation. SAS Power will estimate the carbon charge recovery it requires on an annual basis and set a rate rider to by customer class applied to the kilowatt hours used. SAS Power will maintain a carbon charge variance account to manage the difference between the amount collected and the amount required to be paid to the federal government. The carbon charge rate rider has been adjusted effective January 1st, 2021. And future carbon charge rate riders will be adjusted by any differences and increases to ensure that SAS Power remains revenue neutral in relation to the collection of the carbon charge. The federal government provides a carbon charge rebate to individuals as an offset to these costs. Light and Power maintains its electric rate structure similar to SAS Power to ensure equity between our customers and the other electric customers in Saskatchewan. This electric rate equity also ensures that the City of Swift Current remains in a competitive position when attracting and retaining industrial, commercial, and residential customers. Light and Power is recommending the implementation of the carbon charge electric rate increase effective January 1st, 2021. All Light and Power residential commercials will see, residential customers will see an average increase of 0.355%, which results in an average monthly increase of 23 cents for an apartment, 45 cents for an average home, and 64 cents for a large residence. All small and medium commercial customers will see an average increase of 0.48% of their total annual billing. And finally, large customers will also see an average increase of 0.48% of their total annual billing. Is therefore respectfully recommended that in accordance with Bylaw Number 6, 1989, the electric rates be adjusted in the following attached schedule effective the January 1st, 2021 billing period.
Thank you, Mr. Macon. Council, I would be looking for a motion.
Worship, without commenting on the politics of that, I will move this report for approval.
Thank you very much. Councillor Pluus, could I have a second, or please?
I will second that, your worship.
Thank you, Councillor Christensen. Councillor, are there any questions or comments to this report, starting with Councillor Friesen?
Not really, just to comment, I guess, that this is in keeping with our commitment to align our city utility rates with SAS Power, and so that's really what we're doing here. So it is what it is, and it's unfortunate that we have to raise the rates just a bit, but we are in keeping with our commitment.
Thank you. Councillor Christensen?
Yeah, my questions were mostly answered anyway. It's all related to the carbon charge, and we have no control over that, so nothing further than that, your worship.
Thank you very much. Councillor Wall? You're on mute, Councillor Wall? And I didn't forget about you.
No, he did. Received notice that we're going to get a 10% rebate on now. Now we're going to get hit again with something, so the saying is government giveth and the government taketh away, and that's all. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Councillor Wall. Councillor Schweitzer?
Nothing at this time, your worship.
Thank you. Councillor Tuntland Weave?
I was just going to mention what Councillor Wall had said. Residents can actually see that SAS Power rebate from the City of Swift Current on your statements now. I saw mine in December, and you'll see that rebate right through until November of this year, so you'll see the increase with the carbon charge, but you'll also see the rebate from SAS Power. Helps just a little bit.
Thank you. Councillor Pluus?
No, nothing further. I think everybody covered it well. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. This was moved by Councillor Pluus and seconded by Councillor Christensen. Always, those in favor, please raise your hands. This motion has passed. Next, I will ask Jim Jones, General Manager of Community Services, to present the report on the Swift Current 57th Baseball Club Agreement.
Thank you, your worship and members of council. The subject of this report is the Swift Current 57th Baseball Club Agreement. The City of Swift Current partners with many nonprofit organizations with the desire to enhance and provide sport, culture, and recreational opportunities for all levels of competition in our community. The Swift Current 57th Baseball Club is a local nonprofit organization that is operated by a dedicated volunteer, board of directors, whose sole purpose is growing the sport of baseball in Swift Current, the southwest, and the province of Saskatchewan. Amidst COVID-19 restrictions and uncertainty, the club has continued to work very hard on retaining sponsorship, streamlining operations, and planning for the upcoming baseball season. Every three years, the agreement between the City of Swift Current and Swift Current 57th Baseball Club expires, and a new agreement is required. Therefore, under discussion, baseball is an important summer sport in our community. A strong partnership between the city and the 57s will continue to enhance and encourage a strong enthusiastic volunteer base. The volunteer base is essential to ensure the success of the 57s in the Western Canadian Baseball League and in the City of Swift Current. Community services staff met with representatives of the 57s to discuss the terms and conditions of the new three-year agreement for the lease of Mitchell Field that would come into effect immediately once signed. For the purpose of this agreement, Mitchell Field shall refer to and include the Baseball Diamond, concession, souvenir booth, admissions booth, beer booth, washroom buildings, bleachers, lights, and the clubhouse. This agreement outlines the terms, fee structures, and partnership regarding facility operations for the use of Mitchell Field. New to this agreement is the addition of the operational partnership of the 57th Clubhouse. In November of 2018, the City of Swift Current entered into a partnership with the 57s to provide and develop a proper clubhouse. At the time, the agreement did not address the long-term operations of the clubhouse building. The operational partnership of the 57th Clubhouse is included within the new agreement. Upon review, administration suggests maintaining the strong partnership that currently exists with the 57s by sharing the utility accounts 50/50 for the clubhouse building, which corresponds to the existing agreement and relationship of the operational expenses at the site. Therefore, it is respectfully recommended that the City of Swift Current enter a new three-year agreement with the Swift Current 57th Baseball Club as attached, and that the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to sign this set agreement.
I was muted. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Council, I will be looking for a motion.
Your worship, I'll move that the City of Swift Current enter a new three-year agreement with the Swift Current 57th Baseball Club as attached to the report that was presented, and the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to sign said agreement.
Thank you, Councillor Schweitzer. A seconder?
I'll second that, your worship.
I'm sorry, I just got all these faces on here, and there's lots of places to look. Now, councillor, are there any questions or comments pertaining to this report or to the agreement that we're going to be signing? Councillor Friesen, I'll start with you, please.
Well, thanks, your worship. First of all, I guess I'd just like to say a big thank you to the volunteers and the board of the 57s for persevering through the COVID-19 and not being able to have a season in 2020. And just to say that I'm certainly looking forward to seeing them play this year and wish them all the best, and I'll be supporting this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Christensen?
No questions, your worship.
Councillor Wall? Set.
No questions, your worship.
Oh, thank you, Councillor Wall. Councillor Schweitzer?
Very happy that we're moving ahead on this one, your worship. The league that the Swift Current 57s play in, the Western Canada Baseball League, is an increasingly growing and evolving league. And with that, the financial obligations of its member teams are becoming steeper. And over the past few years, we've seen a couple of Saskatchewan-based teams no longer able to compete in the league. So it's excellent that the City of Swift Current is a good partner with our 57s, and it is a great partnership. They look after the field, and they put in hundreds, if not thousands, of hours every summer into maintaining it. So very happy that we're moving forward with a strong partnership, your worship.
Thank you very much, Councillor Schweitzer. Councillor Tuntland Weave?
I would just like to echo some of the sentiments said here about maintaining a relationship with the 57s. I reached out to Brad Woods this week and talked to him a little bit about the season that they didn't have. They do feel like they're underwater, like so many of our businesses and other organizations, without being able to do any fundraising or have a season at all. I would just encourage the residents of Swift Current, if you know someone on the board, know one of the players, or know anybody involved with the organization, give them some love, like everybody needs. They need some encouragement that hopefully we will have a year this year, and they just need to hear that we want them, that we need them.
Thank you very much, Councillor Tuntland Weave. Councillor Pluus, any comments?
Yeah, just a little bit here, your worship. I think Councillor Schweitzer mopped up some of what I wanted to talk about a little bit, but if we look back to when this agreement was first arrived at to build this clubhouse, sort of some of the background around that report or that decision was very much what Councillor Schweitzer was talking about, that when you look around the league, you know, whether it's issues of recruitment or attracting fans, but particularly getting talent to commit to coming up to play. Swift Current was a fair ways behind some of the other clubs. In fact, I would say the vast majority of the clubs in the league in terms of what we could offer in terms of capital. You know, just the clubhouse for players, you know, stands, just the whole atmosphere and what we're able to provide for this team was not really up to snuff. And as a result of this agreement, we were able to remedy that. We're able to put the 57s in a spot where they could compete for some talent, you know, getting students or young folks, largely from, you know, Canada, and a big part coming from the United States as well is about recruiting these guys. We have a very strong reputation, obviously, as a club. Lots of success in the past, lots of great personalities that have storied folks for this community. But those things only go so far, and you know, if you're a young guy sitting down in the southern US looking for a place to come play for the summer, and you can go to Oka Tokes, or you can go to some of these places, or a place that, you know, you have to go and run down to the Iplex to get changed before a game because there isn't a proper facility, it makes it a little tough for us to recruit. So that was some of the background to this, and you know, the word partnership has been used a lot, and very appropriately in this case, because this is a true partnership between the 57s. And you know, not just the City of Swift Current, obviously, is an entity, but through the City of Swift Current, the entire community coming out to support. And I'm very happy to see that that got done. I'm happy, of course, to also supplement their operations a little bit in terms of making sure that we get this set up in the right way so that they can be successful, particularly on the heels of such a challenging year. So you know, if we're not willing to do these sorts of things, we are going to see these types of entities just disappear in our community, and that's not something that I think is good for, certainly not for the 57s, but also not for the City of Swift Current. So I'll be very happy to support this as well, and I wish them all the best for 2021. And I would ask folks out there that if you like the 57s, you want to support the 57s, please get out and watch some games, consider buying some season tickets, put your butt in the seat, buy some hot dogs, and make it a fun summer. Hopefully, we can all do that this summer, your worship. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councillor Pluus. I do want to say also that this is a huge thing. We are partners with them. It is going to be exciting. Hopefully, this spring COVID is at least at bay somewhat with vaccination, and this will be sort of the first games I think we'll be able to get to. I know the WHL announced some games, but it'll be interesting to see what happens there. So with three or four months down the road, with any luck, we'll have some games you can go to. So I'm looking forward to that. And the other thing I did want to mention, Mr. Jones had commented earlier to me a few weeks back how, what good partners they were. When this COVID first started, we needed a place where we could take people that was safe. When this COVID first started, we needed a place where we could take people that was safe. We picked them up in an ambulance if they thought they had COVID. And we looked around our community and looked around our facilities, and we didn't have any place we could set up. And he'd asked the 57s because it was to use the clubhouse, and they agreed right away. And we set up the, some computer links and some other things to it. And I, I don't think we ever had to use a room, but just in case we needed it, it was there. And they were willing, as a partner, to help us, the citizens of Swift Current and the City of Swift Current. So it is a true partnership, and like all true partnerships, they go both ways, not just one way. So that's good to see. Anyway, thank you for all your comments, counsel. This motion was moved by Counselor Schweitzer and seconded by Counselor Tuntman Weeb. All those in favor, please raise your hands. This motion has passed. Mr. Jones, please proceed with the next report regarding 2020 and 2021 cemetery fees.
Thank you, your worship and members of council. The subject of this report is 2020 and 2021 cemetery fees. The background is the City of Swift Current Cemetery fees for 2019 and 2020 and January 31st, 2021. These fees for the sale of cemetery plots or lots and for burials, opening and closing are approved by city council. In 2020, the city budgeted to recover $191,311. As of December 31st, 2020, the city had collected $121,688.88, or 83% of the set amount. Recovery rates over the past eight years are attached in Appendix B. The total annual revenue is directly related to the number of interments the city completes in a year. The City of Swift Current Cemetery revenue is generated from the following four main sources. Sale of lots and plots projected in 2020, $68,528, actual of $28,745. Burial fees projected of 2020 of $91,540, actual $71,705. Sale of niches, $27,000 for 2020, and the actual $15,549. Monument permits projected 2020, $4,243, and 2020 actual $5,690. Municipal cemeteries, which report higher recovery rates, generally augment operating revenues with earnings from perpetual care fund and/or in the sale of items such as concrete foundation, faults, liners, markers, columbarium inscription, and urns. And the sale of cemetery items can bring a substantial revenue and is mainly offered by larger municipal and private cemeteries. The sale of cemetery items had been considered in the past, but because it is in direct competition with local private cemeteries, the city decided against it. In addition, storage facilities and other resources, the equipment and labor, et cetera, would be required to purchase and store cemetery warehouse items. In relation to other urban municipal cemeteries in Saskatchewan, Appendix A, and their rate structure, the City of Swift Current's rates are average or slightly below average in most specific areas. Administration is recommending the addition of an administration fee, which would be used to recover staff time for transfer of intermittent rights and earned casket interments. The categories and fee structure of the various municipal cemeteries all differ. Some have licensing fees, some have veteran-specific fees, or other distinguishable categories. Upon review, the attached proposed two-year cemetery rates increase represent a 0% increase for interments and disserments, and a 0% increase for lots and niches in 2021. To be effective, as of February 1st, 2022, administration is recommending a 4% increase for interments, disserments, lots, and niches. Additionally, the monument insulation permit, $90 for companies to access city cemeteries, providing installations are recommended, shall be increased by $5 to $95. It is also administration's recommendation that as of February 1st, 2022, an administration fee in the sum of $95 be implemented. This is similar to other municipal cemeteries in Saskatchewan, and would assist with the cost of transferring burial rights, assisting with the purchase of cemetery software, and ensuring the safety of cemetery records. This two-year plan will assist others who are dependent on the city's rates to prepare accordingly and to reduce the administration time involved in setting these fees annually. Therefore, it is respectfully recommended that council approves the attached two-year cemetery rates, including GSC, for the period of February 1st, 2021 to January 31st, 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Counsel, I will be looking for a motion.
Worship, I'll happy, I'll be happy to move this recommendation.
Thank you, Counselor Pluus.
I'll second that, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you very much, Counselor Friesen. Now, are there any comments or questions, starting with you, Counselor Friesen? Your worship.
I guess, oh, sorry. Is it okay now?
Yes, it's fine now. Yes.
Okay, thank you. The, I had a question with respect to the math on this report because if we were budgeting to recover 191,000 and we only recovered 121, it's less than the 83%, as was mentioned there, but I know there's more to that story. So I'm just wondering if Mr. Jones would be able to just give us a little more detail as to how that 83% was arrived at.
I'd be happy to, Counselor Friesen, through the mayor. I have asked as well Michael Newell, our parks manager, who is responsible for cemeteries, to be in attendance tonight for any questions later. But with regards to the actual expenses for cemeteries, that figure is $121,568.44. And the reason for that is we deployed a lot of our community services staff to the parks this year based on COVID. And one of the beneficiaries of that was the cemetery where we were only had to deploy two staff to there over the course of the summer. So we were able to actually save some money on the cemeteries, which is one of the only good things that we've had about COVID that has come up too. But anyways, 83% of that total amount, 121,568.44, is accurate at that, at that point, so.
Thanks for that reply. And the other question I had was respect, with respect to the cemetery software. Would you be able to just give us a little bit more information about what that's about?
Michael, I defer to you if you wouldn't mind answering that question, please.
Sure, no problem. Thanks for the question. So most modern cemeteries and municipalities in terms, we want to track what we're doing and what we're selling in terms of lots, columbarium niches, and just the overall services so that we can plan for the future. Currently, the city has a Microsoft Access database, so it's, it can't be, also can't be hooked up to our financial software. So we're looking to modernize the, basically, the city's record-keeping. It's something that I think most municipalities have done. And it's an ongoing process, so we want to, moving forward is something we want to look at because it'll help the city cemetery operations and the finance.
Is that good? Counselor Friesen? Thank you. Counselor Christensen, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, yeah, I have one question and a comment, actually. The, the comment just being, I'm, I'm happy to see that we're holding the line for this coming year. We've had a number of increases over the last number of years on this, on this budget. And at least we're, we're holding it for this year and, and giving all of our partners a chance to incorporate the increases into next year's fees. The question was more along where our projections were versus where the budget actually came, or where the actual action came in at. We seem to have missed it by a fair amount on some of these numbers. And I just wonder if there was a specific reason for that, or what, what the explanation might be.
Michael, if you wouldn't mind answering is again, please.
Um, I would say that's definitely directly related to the COVID-19 pandemic with the restrictions on having, being able to have a certain amount of numbers of people at a graveside service. And cremation being a much more popular option, people can have their loved ones cremated, and they don't have to bring them right to the cemetery after they passed away. So we might see an uptick in 2021, depending on how COVID's going this year. So if we see more vaccinations, we might see an uptick, ticking cremation interments.
Thank you. That's what I expected the answer to be, but I just wanted to check. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Christensen. Counselor Wall, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I have some questions regarding columbariums. How many of those do we have, and do we, do we build more once they fill up? What's the plan for that?
So currently, we have five columbariums, or six, six columbariums, I'm sorry. There's six columbariums. We have five at Mount Pleasant Burial Park. And we have niches available. There's two different styles of niches. There's what's called a companion niche, where you'll put two sets of cremator, two cremated remains into, and a single where you'll put one person's cremated remains, and we have more singles. So you have less options when you go to Mount Pleasant Burial. We installed a new columbarium at the end of 2017 at Hillcrest Cemetery, and we do have a lot of inventory available. The general rule of thumb, what we want to look at is, once we approach 75% of our columbarium niches sold, we want to start rolling into and looking at our next columbarium, so that we'll have options for families when they're looking for niches.
Thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Counselor Wall, and thank you very much, Mr. Newell, for giving us that information. Counselor Schweitzer, any questions or comments?
Any questions over here have been covered, your worship. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Tuntman Weeb?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Newell for that information and clarification.
Yes, very much so. Thank you very much. Counselor Pluus, anything?
Uh, yeah, thanks, your worship. Thanks, guys, for the report. Just a question about the, the recovery rates that Counselor Christensen had brought up as well. You know, I, so my understanding, right, that, that basically a recovery of 83 this year, despite missing some revenue targets, was directly related to expense being, being down? Is that fair, Michael?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So on that note, I mean, I was just going to say, great job getting a recovery of 83%. So council and budget process provides targets for various different business units in the city for recovery, particularly, you know, those that are subsidized by, by tax and taxpayers. So in this year, 83% of that expense was recovered through operations. The balance of that doesn't go away. It's still a cost that the city absorbs, and we just absorb that generally. So I guess my question moving forward, and don't get me wrong, I, I think that, that the year sort of of 0% increase is fair to provide some certainty to our partners. And, you know, as a businessperson myself, any little bit of certainty that we can cling to this year is, is fabulous, and we'll take it. So I, I certainly commend you for, for that decision. In the second year, though, we're jumping a bit, and I'm wondering if you can tell me what the, what sort of the target recovery rate is, or what you're budgeting for at the end of this agreement.
Well, my understanding as years gone by, we're always trying to achieve a 100% recovery rate, which is very difficult because it's, it's hard to judge how many grave sales we're going to have, and how many interments we're going to have in a year or so. But we want to hit that number based on, and we can kind of look back at what our operating expenses are at the cemetery to try and predict our, our future. So we want to continue moving up, which, if you look at the 10-year period, we've had a, we had one blip, I think, in 2014, we went down to 60%. Besides that, we had been basically overall rising in general. And we have to balance that want and desire to have 100% recovery rate with what's affordable for our community. We don't really have any competition in a private cemetery, but from speaking with some of the funeral homes, they try to set their rates, bar our rates, so we're not really competing with them. We're trying to stay even keel. And then when you compare us against similar municipalities across the province, we, we definitely don't want Swift Current to become the top, you know, in charges. And in some of these areas, especially with our services, our opening, closing fees, we were going over what the provincial average is, and we want to make sure that that's tempered because we don't want people feeling like they cannot access that service within the city.
Yeah, no, I think that those are very fair comments. And like you said, you know, looking back to the, the 10 years that, that we're spanning in this report or that you provided for comparisons, you know, back in 2011, kind of starting at 70%, and of course, having some ups and downs through those years, but, but, you know, a pretty, a pretty good trend, I think, of small increases, getting us to a spot where, you know, where we're still competitive, but while also recovering more so that, that the subsidization is just reduced. Because like I said, the cost never goes to zero. Just the fact that we only recovered 83% means that we're spending that 17% generally, basically. So, you know, we always, of course, have to cover 100% of our expenses. It's just how we do it, and, and that's the breakdown. So I agree. I, I know it's not an easy job, making that balance. And, and I certainly can appreciate that after having sat around budget tables for several years as well, that there's, there's no, no easy decisions when you're, you're having to make those, make those balances. So thanks so much for the report. Great to see the progress. Look forward to seeing you again in a couple of years when we have this, this discussion again.
Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Pluus. And one more time, Mr. Newell, I do want to say thank you for the information. It's, it's a big help for all of us. Even though we read the report, it's a big help when you can answer those questions. Thank you again. I'll thank, thank you to all of council for your comments. This motion was moved by Counselor Pluus and seconded by Counselor Friesen. All those in favor, please raise your hands. This motion has passed. Thank you. Moving, moving along, I will turn it over to the city clerk to present the next report.
Thank you, your worship and members of council. The subject of this report is remuneration of council and meetings policy. This is a follow-up report to the council meeting of November 30th and December 14th of 2020. Since we have a new council, this is an ideal time to review and exchange the existing policy set for council remuneration and meetings. After the November 30th council meeting, public notice was posted for two consecutive weeks within the local newspaper, as well as the city's website, indicating council's intention to consider an amendment to the above stated policy. After further discussion and a subsequent report was brought to the council meeting of December 14th, a revised public notice was posted for two consecutive weeks within the local papers, as well as the city news, city's website, indicating an additional amendment to the said policy. No feedback was received. It is therefore respectfully recommended that council approves the amendment to the remuneration for council and meetings policy to reflect the following. The mayor's salary will remain at 42% of Step 1 of CAO's salary. The counselor's remuneration will increase from 35% to 38% of the mayor's salary. All claims for meetings and per diems for members of council will be eliminated, and an increase from $35 per meeting to $50 per meeting for members of the public that are appointed by the city to sit on the various boards and committees.
Thank you, city clerk. Counsel, I will be looking for a motion. Counselor Tuntman Weeb?
I move that the council approves the amendment to the remuneration for council and the meetings policy as presented by the city clerk.
Thank you very much. A seconder?
I will second that motion, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Christensen. Now, are there any comments or questions, starting with you, Counselor Friesen?
Thanks, your worship. We've talked about this several times already, so I have nothing to add at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Christensen?
Just a quick question. Do we have a, a dollar amount that is, this is in actual savings? With the, because it sounds like an increase. We've talked about it, that it isn't really with the elimination of the fees. And I was just wondering what the, what the dollar amount may be if we have that.
I'll defer that to Carrie, if possible, please.
Thank you for the question, Counselor Christensen. I don't have the, the number in front of me, but the best my memory serves, I believe it's approximately a $40,000 annual savings. You're welcome.
Counselor Christensen, if I could, from what I see, it's, it depends how many meetings we go to this year, or how many meetings they went to last year or the year before. But Ms. Cobbler is correct. We're looking right around that total of $40,000 savings between the mayor's salary and all of council's salary decrease.
Thank you.
Counselor Wall, I won't forget about you on this one.
First of all, I'd like to thank Counsel Pluus on the last meeting. He explained this very well, and I, I appreciate that, and, and I will support the motion.
Thank you very much, Counselor Wall. Counselor Schweitzer, anything?
Nothing further on this issue, your worship. We will be supporting us.
Thank you very much, Counselor Schweitzer. Counselor Tuntan Weeb?
I just wanted to acknowledge some of the people that have asked me the question, and I don't know if the other counselors have been asked the question. How, how does the public know that we're going to attend the meetings for the committees or the boards that were set on if we're not getting paid per meeting? So it's a valid question. They asked. My answer would be, we campaigned on honesty and integrity. Part of our job description is that we attend these boards and committees that we have been placed on. So that's our job description. That's what we're getting paid for. Plus, on top of that, we do file a report to the city clerk and to the mayor after we've attended these meetings. So I, I think we can put that to bed, and everybody can rest that we're going to be attending those meetings. The ones, you know, unless something comes up, but that's part of our job.
Thank you very much, Counselor Tuntan Weeb. Counselor Pluus?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. Thanks to Counselor Wall for the compliment. I appreciate it. You know, as Counselor Frazin said, we have talked about this a few times, but I think it bears some, some repetition, because I think there may still be some question out there in the community, just the way that it's, you know, it's a, the way the report is written, it appears that there's an increase in salary, but I can tell you in effect that there is not. You know, doing the math over even myself from the past term or the past year to this present year, this, we should experience about a ten percent savings on your average counselor's salary. So, you know, there certainly is a decrease in, in, in the take home for, for a counselor, which I think is appropriate. As we've talked about in the past, you know, this is a, this is a signal of leadership, and it's not, you know, it's maybe not the biggest line item that we're gonna see in our budget, but it's a symbolic one that I think shows that we're serious about fiscal responsibility. We're serious about leading from the front. And we're not just going to, to ask other people to, to trim their belts and cut their services. We're going to do it ourselves, and not just say we're gonna do it, but we're going to show that we're going to do it. The one question I would have for Madam Clerk, and I, I think that she answered this in previous meetings, but I see in the second time, because this has come to council with some revisions, we've, we've talked about this a few times. We've opened this up for notice to the community a few times as well. And in the most recent one, we had no feedback from the public at all, no questions, no, no comments officially. You know, of course, to individual counselors, I think that, that there being comments or questions maybe that have come, but, but nothing through the official channels. And I guess I just wanted to ask Madam Clerk if there was anything that came to, to City Hall through the entire time that we had advertised this, not just the most recent one.
Very good question, Counselor Pluus. And I can advise, I did not have one inquiry, email, telephone call, or comment. So I think it was, it was well-received in the way that it was presented.
Good. Well, I, I hope that's an indication of people silently supporting what we're doing here. And, and I hope that it, it signals that there's some understanding in the community as well. So on that note, I will certainly be supporting this report and this recommendation. And I'll sign off. Thanks, your worship.
Thank you very much, Counselor Pluus. I do want to say, Counselor Tuntan Weeb, when people are asking, you know, how, how can, how can citizens know we're gonna attend the meeting? Well, all of us ran on, all of us ran on honesty and, and honesty and integrity, and being very forthright with what we're doing with our time. And I have full confidence in all my council members, that they are going to attend the meetings. And I can't imagine anybody, we're not, we're not schoolchildren, we're not teenagers, we're all adults. And so I have full confidence that, that little per diem, or whatever that is per diem, or the meeting rates aren't gonna make us go to, go to these meetings or not go to these meetings. So I have full confidence in my council. And yes, Counselor Pluus, you have something?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. It just, your comment twigg'd on it for me, that, you know, it has always been a, a practice of council, that if, if you're unable to attend a meeting, that you attempt to find somebody to replace you. And I know in, in prior terms, if I was, for example, you know, maybe I was on a holiday, or maybe I just had a conflict with other boards, or, or work, or family. I usually had somebody else attend those meetings in my stead. And, and typically, as Counselor Tuntan Weeb said, there was some sort of report or minutes that went back, so that everybody could have an idea of what happened at that meeting. So, you know, I, I think the folks in the community should know that, that, you know, we're treating this as a team effort. These boards and committees are not just one person's responsibility to attend. They're, they're the responsibility of the entirety of city council. You just happen to have one person who's officially appointed to it. But, but we, through the last term, I attended many different boards and committees that I wasn't assigned to, and many different city counselors over the course of my terms have attended meetings in my stead as well. And I think that we can continue to expect that same behavior. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pluus, for explaining that, and I would expect the, I would expect that from the existing council also. One other comment I want to make about this report is, we are increasing the, the citizens' amount from thirty-five to fifty dollars, which isn't a lot. But it, the increase hasn't come for a number of years. So just for the citizens that sit on all these different boards, because we have many, there's gotta be thirty or forty in total that are sitting on these boards, and they have to go to these meetings. So it's just a small thank you to our citizens, and that is also in this report. Anyway, thank you for all your comments, council. The motion was moved by Counselor Tuntan Weeb and seconded by Counselor Christensen. All those in favor, please raise your hands. This motion has passed. Moving down the agenda, there are no reports for information, or bylaws, or any items under unfinished business. This brings us to new business. Council, I would be looking for a motion to receive and file the following information. Swift Current Library Branch Board Minutes of December second, 2020, and the agenda from the library for January sixth, 2021. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please?
Your worship, I will move.
The mover will be Counselor Christensen. And a seconder?
I'll second your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Schweitzer. Any questions, starting with Counselor Pluus, or Pluus? I got you my mind there, Ryan, I'm sorry. Counselor Frazin, starting with you.
No, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Christensen.
Nothing, your worship.
Counselor Wall?
Nothing, your worship.
Counselor Schweitzer?
Nothing at this moment, your worship.
Thank you. Counselor Tuntan Weeb?
No questions. Thank you.
And finally, Counselor Pluus?
Nothing for me. Thanks.
Okay. This motion was moved by Counselor Christensen and seconded by Counselor Schweitzer. All those in favor, please raise your hands. This motion has passed. There are no items listed under communications or requests for on-camera. Therefore, we continue with reports of council members. I will now open the floor to council for questions or comments for administration or statements they wish to make, once again, starting with Counselor Frazin.
Your worship, the first thing I'd like to do is just commend the citizens of Swift Current for stepping up and going above and beyond to support some of our community groups and organizations throughout 2020. And one of the latest examples I noticed was that the Salvation Army actually surpassed their fundraising goal. They wanted to raise two-hundred-and-twelve thousand, and they got two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand in their fundraising. So just a huge shout-out to the citizens for all the support and, and for helping these organizations through the tough times. I noticed that the SPCA is continuing to fundraise, and they've got a really cool little fundraiser going right now. And that's the, they call it Pack the Pan, and where you can drop off all your recyclable items out at their bottles and cans out at the shelter till the end of January, and they'll take them to the recycle, and of course, get the funds. So if, if you're still, if you have bottles or cans in your basement that need to be recycled, that's a perfect opportunity, and it will sure help them with their fundraising. The other thing that I thought was kind of a good news story was, I noticed on Swift Current online that we had some pretty positive building statistics for 2020. And I just wondered if Mr. Solberg would be able to review a little bit of that for us, and just talk a little bit about building permits and how things went in 2020.
Sure. I'd be happy to. So thank you, Counselor Frazin. You know, I think obviously, first and foremost, well, 2019 was a challenging year in itself for construction. And then this past year, 2020, obviously, it's no surprise that it's been challenging for everybody, and, and more particularly for our small business community. But I think we've been able to see how our, our business community's been able to adapt and change and innovate, and do what they can to keep the doors open, and their employees employed. And, and that, you know, that's, that's quite remarkable in this really uncertain times. But, you know, that said, there, there, there's been some good investment in our community as well. It's, you know, just based on, on statistics compared to 2019. In 2020, we're down a little bit on the residential side. We're down about fourteen percent. Most of our residential construction was renovations and additions, and, and decks and garages and those types of things. But when we look at the commercial and the industrial and institutional side, we're up about four-hundred percent. And, you know, that's been some largely attributed to our egg sector. It's been really strong, and we've seen some really significant investments in our, you know, a pulse processing facility or other large egg producers or processors. We've seen, you know, a new restaurant from a new construction like a Popeyes to changes of uses such as maybe a doctor's office into urban sellers, liquor store, to a lot of different changes of uses and additions, expansions. Could be the, you know, an egg supply store. They did a big addition. So it's been, you know, overall, it's been promising, you know. Two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty, we're up in toll about a hundred and thirty-eight percent. Now, of course, I gotta, I gotta stipulate that 2019 was no banner year, but we're on the right trend. And then when we look at some of the development permits we're working with, you know, there's some, some good interest in, in development this upcoming year, and we look forward to working with investors from outside of Swift Current and our local business community, and see how we can keep developing Swift Current, and hopefully, once this pandemic gets resolved, that, you know, we continue to have a renewed, renewed sense of optimism and confidence, and, and really looking forward to 2021, just like everybody else is.
Thank you for that, Mr. Solberg. And I just want to remind you about, when I first came on council eight years ago, one of the first meetings I attended, you were talking about trying to sell the land in the McIntyre Industrial Park. And I don't think you'd sold any or very little at that point. And, and my comment back to you was, well, I hope that by the end of this term, you'll be able to sell it out. And, and you did. So, so I'll throw that challenge out for some of the second part of the McIntyre Industrial Park out there, and, and hope that maybe we'll be able to see some new businesses, or some businesses expanding to start filling that space up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Frazin.
Thank you, Counselor Frazin, for those comments. Counselor Christensen, do you have anything you want to say?
Nothing further, your worship.
Thank you very much, Counselor Wall. Almost missed? Oh, you're on mute?
Okay, there we are. This is sort of on the lighter side. The, the citizens of Swift Current never cease to amaze me in what they do. They're, they're proactive, so I go for a walk. I used to go for a walk a mile, mile and a half a day. So I was walking along, and I see this car pull up behind me. First of all, I thought maybe some girls were chasing me. But, so they stopped the car, and they, she opened her door, and she had two big Christmas bags there. And she took one of the presents out, and she gave me one of those. And she said, "These are the four of the people that are walking." I thought, you know, that's pretty good. I, I, I'm very impressed with, people do these things on their own, and it's, it's makes the city of Swift Current more of a home place. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Wall. That is a nice story. Thank you. Counselor Schweitzer, anything?
I got a few things, your worship. I, I actually strive to walk about ten thousand steps a day, and no one's ever given me a present, so it must have been something about Counselor Wall. But I want to give a, a shout-out to everyone who volunteered to work a kettle shift for the Salvation Army this, this season. And I know Counselor Frazin alluded to the Salvation Army, but they needed some volunteers to run those kettles. And, you know, many within our community stepped up, and that was great to see. The Coldest Night of the Year fundraiser, it's something that, that Nathan at the Center is going to be organizing in February. It's a real easy fundraiser, just right foot, left foot, the body follows. And you can do some walking in a safe socially distant way, and, and help support, you know, many of the things that, that the Center and Swift Current supports. And I know I'm very much looking forward to, to partaking in that event. And if anyone has any questions or would like to participate, I would encourage them to, to reach out to Nathan at the Center. The city of Swift Current, and the Swift Current District Chamber of Commerce recently did an online Zoomcast initiative called Talk Local, which went over quite well. I want to thank Michael Lutelier, who's on this call and who operates all of our Zoom meetings. He was big in organizing that with, with ten different guests in our business community. Carla Wiens also did a great job helping organize that. And Lindsay Gerbrand, who's a Chamber Board member, did an excellent job of, of hosting those as well. Last week, I had the, the pleasure of attending the library board meeting, the local public library board meeting. Thank you, your worship, for appointing me to that board. It's a very enthusiastic group that's very, very passionate about, about literacy and about the written word in our community. And they, they have some great things going on there. It seems as though during these, these COVID times with this pandemic, the demand for library services have actually gone up. People are choosing to, to spend their free time reading, which is exciting to see. And, you know, there's so many things in technology on iTunes. If you order a certain song, then they'll say, "Well, if you like this song, you'll probably like that." And Netflix is the same way with suggestions. Well, they don't really have technology that does that at the library, but they have someone named Lorraine, who does a great job of, "Oh, you enjoyed this book, so you'll probably like this one too." So I'd, I'd like to thank the crew at the local public library board for, for welcoming me into their group. And we're looking forward to the regional meeting on January twenty-fifth. I'll report back from that. And yes, very much looking forward to my first board meeting with the Drug Strategy Action Committee this Thursday. So thank you, your worship.
Thank you very much, Counselor Schweitzer. Counselor Tuntan Weeb, any comments or questions?
Sure, I do. I was pleased to attend the Festival of Trees on behalf of Mayor Baridol on December sixteenth. There were sixteen entries into the museums contest, and I got to draw for the winners on that. Thank you for the museum for doing that. It was just one event you could attend for Christmas. They even had the Grinch show up a few times, and kids could have their pictures taken with him, and I won't say who the Grinch was. I also attended my first meeting and their last meeting of the year for Swift Current Tourism. It's, of course, been a hard year for Swift Current and the tourism board due to COVID. They tightened their belts, so to speak, to make it through 2020 and into the first part of 2021. Our meeting included a session with the Destinate Group, which has been hired to determine a plan for sustainability of the organization, its long-term viability, structure, and how it can best support our tourism industry in this area. It's to be a four-month process. It started in December. It's going to end in March. There's a survey that has been emailed out right now to members of tourism. I'd like, I'd like to note that that survey only took me about five minutes. I think they say it takes fifteen. It's, it's not that long. The Destinate Group is gathering information from that survey to see how best to proceed with this. So it's really important to take that five-minute survey. Another thing that tourism did is, they're not invoicing the members this year. They don't feel that any of the members got their value for their fees last year, so nobody's going to be invoiced this year. That's a pretty big step for tourism, because the board is hurting, the, the group is hurting in Swift Current. One of the partners of the group is Todd Brandt. Some of you may know that name. He is from Swift Current. And I spent a little bit of time staring at the screen going, "Is that Todd Brandt, or who is that?" And then finally, when they said he was from Swift Current, I'm going, "Oh, yeah, I went to high school with him," but he is older than me, so we had to do a little bit of catching up. Him and his partner Lori Sly are actually encouraging tourism and encouraging groups to continue to plan for this year, 2021, despite COVID-19. They think that's a really important thing. I think a lot of the groups in Swift Current are hesitant to plan for this year because we don't know when the vaccine. Is going to have a full rollout and and what the consequences are going to be for that. But that would be their hope is that we plan to have events in Swift Current. I agree with that. I also had a Zoom meeting last week with Bulagosh and Lisa Kuns with Truth and Reconciliation, and they did that purposely to fill me in. About their board before I attended it, so they'd kind of bring me up to speed, and I'd understand. Our meeting is tomorrow night, and I really appreciated their forethought with that. Not making me look too foolish tomorrow night when I attend the board meeting. So we got some really considerate people in Swift Current, and I'm really looking forward to sitting on the boards that you've placed me on, Mayor Bridle. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Tuntan Wee. Counselor Pless, do you have any comments or questions of admin?
I do have a couple here, your worship. Thanks very much. Just as a reminder, for all of you who have a pet in the city of Swift Current, a dog or a cat. I got a letter in the mail here this week reminding me that I needed to get renew my license for Leo. So if you have a dog or a cat in the city of Swift Current, you are required to have a dog tag. Of course, part of your fee, which for me is only twenty seven dollars for a year, is not really that much, but that goes to support the. The dog park and a variety of other things within the city of Swift Current as well. So, you know, the Bob Barker of City Council tonight encouraging everybody to spay and neuter their pets and to also license them tonight. A couple other things, you know, folks have mentioned during the course of this meeting that we live in a pretty amazing community, and I couldn't agree more. You know, we've got, despite very uncertain times, a very strange year, we've got. Our entrepreneurship on full display, still even at the tail end, hopefully, of the COVID nineteen pandemic, we've got. We've got a young lady who started Studio Ninety in our community, another business right here in the downtown. That's in the professional building. They've done an awesome job of renovating that space and really. You know, really making it look like something right here in downtown again. So a person, you know, risking their capital, risking their time and and starting a new business. We have Curry Town. Which just started operating. I haven't had an opportunity to go yet, but. I'm a very big fan of Indian food, so I'm looking forward to trying that out here before too long. And I'm sure I'm missing some others, but, you know, we we live in one of the most entrepreneurial entrepreneurial cities. In Canada, and, you know, that continues to be displayed year after year after year. So thanks to those folks who who invested in our community to do that. You know, while I'm talking about business, I want to say thanks to all those people in our community who chose to shop local. You know, no secret again that it was a challenging year for lots of businesses in twenty twenty, and. And, you know, we talked a lot about that as a council and and as business people in the chamber in the in our community about how important it is, particularly this year. To choose to shop locally, to choose to spend your money that you earn in this community, to continue to support others in this community, because. You know, if when you're spending your dollars in other places, you know, those dollars leave our our city. They stop churning in our city. So. You know, in particular, this year, it was so important that we made those conscious decisions to support locally. And, you know, when I was out Christmas shopping, talking to business owners. And since then, it's been very positive to hear that I, you know, I think without fail, all of the places that I've I've been in and folks that I've talked to. Have had good things to say about what their Decembers look like and and having that carry on into January as well so far. So. That's very encouraging to hear, and I would just ask folks to to consider keeping that up, you know, we're not out of the woods yet, and. And it's maybe a great opportunity to change our focus a little bit to to think locally first, and and, you know, if you can get something here to choose to do that. Also, I just wanted to remind folks, or I guess not remind, but let them know that we are going to be talking about our budget soon as a city, and. And that's coming up next next month. We have a couple days set aside for it. And I think we're going to have substantial amount of time to review our our proposals and the budget. Budget binders in advance of that. So if there's anything that's on your mind. That you think we need to know about or we should know about, or that you want us to talk about or invest in, or perhaps not invest in. Please reach out and let us know because that's the time when when we sit down and have those discussions. A couple other things here, your worship, if you'll allow me, is is I understand there's going to be a Bronco season, which is encouraging. I have no information as to what that looks like yet, but I know there's lots of folks that are really hoping to get to see some. Some live action sports yet, and and I guess we'll stay tuned to hear what what the news is on that. And just to follow up on what Counselor Schweitzer was saying at the library, that that, you know, that technology's not there to to. Recommend to you the next thing. I've got to let you know, Counselor Schweitzer, that I've got this app on my phone called the Liby app. And as long as you have a library card for the Schnuck Regional Library. You can download that app and listen to audiobooks. You can download ebooks. And while it's not free, it is included with your being a taxpayer in the city of Swift Current. So as long as you have that card. You can log on and download audiobooks. I I tend to drive a lot for work, and it's a great opportunity for me to to sit and listen to something that isn't. Isn't music. It's you can you can invest in in your own education or your own entertainment and and listen to audiobooks or or download ebooks, and it does actually tell me what I might enjoy next. And I know that you'll appreciate that there's a lot of Star Wars books and audiobooks on there. So just a word to the wise there. I think that's it, your worship. I've taken up enough time here. I just want to say thanks to thanks to the community for continuing to. To believe in us and and offer us your ideas moving forward, and I ask that you continue to do that when we go into budget. So thanks. Thanks for tonight.
Thank you very much, Counselor Pless, and thank you to all of council for all your comments and questions. I find this part of the the council meeting is the most interesting for me. I always learn something. You know, you think as mayor, you think as a business person, you're around the community, and you hear everything going on, and you just don't. And every time we've had one of these, this is, I think, my fourth or third now, I learned something, and that's good. Thank you for all your comments. And Counselor Wall, I do want to say, this is a great community we live in. We've got lots of good, good people. Counselor Pless and Counselor Friesen, great entrepreneurs around here. We know it, and and it's really, really good. So in it, that's all all the comments I'm going to make. Now, this concludes our first council meeting of the year, this eleventh day of January, and I will be looking for motion to adjourn this evening's meeting. Counselor Schweitzer, you're up.
Your worship, after hearing Counselor Pless talk about pets and cats and dogs registration, I move to adjourn right now.
And a seconder, please? Counselor Wall? Moved by Counselor Schweitzer. I'm not going to repeat your words, Counselor Schweitzer, and seconded by Counselor Wall. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Thank you very much. This meeting is now adjourned.